Stream should be up.
I'll call this meeting to order as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCoslin, Roll call please.
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. McGregor?
Here.
Mr. Modrick?
Here.
Mr. Nagel?
Here.
Mrs. Roll? Mr. Scalzo?
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza?
Present.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mrs. Dobos?
Here.
Eight members present.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have a presentation by Cipher and Cipher, the firm that audits our school district every year.
Good evening, board members. Thank you all for having us here tonight. We passed out a copy of our audit report, copy of the management letter, also a paper copy of the presentation. I believe your business office administration had given you electronic copies of all that in advance. So the presentation is on the screen. We'll be following along with that, condenses the audit report into what we hope is an understandable format. Is that feedback?
No.
Okay. Everybody can hear me? Ah, okay. So, all right, well, we will start with page two. Yeah, might need to go over there a little.
No, sorry.
Well, the reason we're here is the Pennsylvania School Code requires us to be here. You have to have an annual audit of the district's financial statement. In this case, it's the year ended June 30th, 2020. Our responsibility is to the school board. We work for you. We audit the financial statements. That are the responsibility of your superintendent and your business manager. The purpose of all audits is to tell you whether the financial statements represent where you were at June 30th and how you got there. The opinion that you see at the bottom of page two is unmodified. It's exactly what the board would expect to see. Anything less, no matter what organization you'd be talking about, would be unacceptable. The second type of audit that we do for you, because Bethel Park School District receives more than $750,000 of federal revenue, we do a single audit in accordance with the Single Audit Amendment of 1996. Why this is important to the board is that we're required to take an additional look at your compliance with laws and regulations and your internal controls, both at the financial statement level and the federal programs that you have. In both cases, we're required to tell you if we have instances of noncompliance that we would report or deficiencies in your internal control system. And if you notice at the bottom of page three, the answer to both of those is no. It's exactly what the board would expect to see. Anything less would be unacceptable. Now, if we go to page four, the financial statements are divided into three parts. We'll talk about the fund-level statement. Those are the day-to-day operating statements of this school district. The biggest of those would be the general fund. Last year, the general fund brought in some 85.3 million, spent a bit less than that, 84.5 million, such that the fund balance last year went up about 842,000. Now, we transferred some money to other funds, principally the capital fund. We have a number of reserves. We'll start with the tax appeal refund first, 161,000 of those, and some other minor revenues of 91. The total fund balance change is actually down 348 from where it was a year ago. Now, the total fund balance of the general fund is 24.7. The unassigned portion is $4.2 million. You're going to hear us talk about that in a little bit. Capital project fund, the other very large fund of the district, total revenue would be $1,268,000. We spent 318 last year, 950 was the increase. We currently have about $10,431,000 in the capital project fund. Arguably, board members, the most important financial decision of the year is the passage of your budget. It's your plan. What are we going to do? For last year, the plan made for the district for 1920, we brought in about $1,707,000 more in revenues than we thought we would. We were over in tax revenue, under in other local revenues, state and federal slightly over the budget. Compared to the other districts that we do, and there's 24 of those, we're seeing a trend towards government entities in general collecting less than the budget for tax revenue. We bucked that trend here. That's a nice thing. Not by a lot, but we did. State and federal revenue, most districts fell short of their state revenue because they didn't know what budget to use coming from the governor's office or the state legislature. Expenditure-wise, we spent about 3.7%, excuse me, 3.7% less than we thought we would, such that we were under budget by 3.2 million. If you look at the larger under-budget variances, plant service, transportation in central, no big surprise there. No kids were riding school buses for about a third of the year. We didn't have any electric on. And that's about how it went last year with almost all of our school clients. No significant over-budget variances. So we hit that decently well. And when we go to page six, we're going to talk about that total general fund fund balance. As you can see, I might grab my own piece of paper. It'll be a little easier to read. Okay. This chart runs from left to right. 2016 is on the far left, 2020 is on the far right. What you can see is the fund balance in total increased each year and then leveled off last year and went down slightly, about 350,000 from 19 into 20. Now, you see multiple layers there. These are recognitions by the board that you have obligation to fund. So we have reserves for retirement. We've made promises in our contract to pay for retiree healthcare. We don't have a separate fund for those, so that money is reserved in the general fund. It's an obligation, a significant one, something that we're glad that you've recognized. We also have a reserve there for Peasars. Folks at the Bain of School District, we will talk about that near the end of our presentation. When we passed the 1920 budget, we passed that budget with a deficit. And that budget deficit was approximately $4.5.4 million. We thought we would get in less than we thought we would. We actually did much better than that. But anytime you pass a deficit budget, you're automatically reserving your fund balance. Couple of other reserves, non-spendable, about $1 million worth of health insurance, inventories and that type of thing, and the other various commitments of $1,161. But in the end, you've got 4.2 million of unreserved, undesignedated fund balance. That's what you have to work with as a board. Now, what we'll do is go to page seven. The question always comes up, well, hey, how much should that fund balance be? There are only nine people in Bethel Park School District that know the right answer to that question. You sit on the board. You have the unenviable task of raising your own taxes. But the point that I would make here is that when you look at the rules of thumb, absolute minimum fund balance, 3%, you cannot run a school district on less than that. We've seen it with school districts that have tried to do that. They fail every time. The mid-range, 5%, and then the upper limit that the state permits you to have is 8%. So if you look at that blue chart, that's your 4.2 million. Draw a line across there. We're above the minimum of 3. We're not quite to the midpoint of 5%. Ideally, it would be great to be close to 8. Now, the thing that we want to mention here, you only have a couple of opportunities as a board to make good financial decisions. Some of them only happen every five years. You know, teachers' contracts, administrative contracts, so on and so forth. Some you get to make annually. So one thing that we can tell you is there's no such thing as an index bank. You can't go to the index bank because it doesn't exist. You get one opportunity a year to revisit your tax rate. Now, if you're in a place that never spends more money next year than you did this year, well, then you never need to raise any revenue. But we all that know that that's not the case. Inflation alone takes care of that. So what we encourage you to do is really consider what it means to not raise taxes and let that index go because it's a missed opportunity. Now, the next page that we'll talk about, we mentioned at the beginning, the fund financial statements are the first part of what we have. Government-wise, we're going to talk about it in a minute.
On page, I'm sorry. Excuse me, can I just ask one question and two slides back? And I guess the last few slides. You know, when we highlighted that the retirement and Peasars, the committed, I believe the board years ago committed that because it wasn't necessarily a contracted obligation. It was more of an anticipated obligation because of the Peasars rates going up, you know, at such a rapid rate. What do you see in other districts? And, you know, since you work with, you know, many other districts, I'm just wondering, are other districts in the same boat? Are they kind of, you know, hedging their bets or building that insurance in for additional Peasars obligations? Or what are you seeing? Are we, you know, out of the ordinary here? Or, because I think this is one of the decisions that we need to make over this next budgeting cycle is what's the right level of that committed fund for, you know, the Peasars contributions? Because we're seeing those increases starting to level off at the state.
When we get to the end of the presentation, we have special charts on that.
Oh, okay.
Something that we're going to look at.
Perfect, great.
But hold that point. It is an important point.
Sure.
An important point. So when we take a look at page eight, the MDNA, page nine, is a letter from your superintendent and your business manager to address to the board, to the public, designed for the non-accessible reader of this statement, presented some financial highlights for the year, an overview of the financial statement, and a discussion of future economic factors. Those things, the opinions of your administration, that bear watching. Peasars being one of them, state of capital facilities, a new one for most school districts, ugly school districts. What about COVID? What will that mean in the long run? When we go to page 10, the first of the two long-term financial statements, net position, fancy tone for balance, but we're upside down by $120 million. And what I can tell you is there's probably not a district in the state that has a positive long-term fund balance. The biggest single contributor to that is the sheer obligation which we're responsible for and recognize in our financial statement, the amount of money that is our share of Peasars. Net capital assets, this is a problem. When you look at that number, that means everything we've ever purchased, minus depreciation, because we're required to do that in upper-level statements, minus the debt that we owe is a minus number. We're upside down in our fixed assets. We shouldn't be that way, given the newness of the building that we have right next door to it. Restriction for capital projects, we have about $10.4 million there. But the unrestricted net position is a minus 124 million. The year-ago number was minus 122.9. We actually got a little bit worse on the long-term basis. Not a surprise. Page 11, the second long-term financial statement, this is how we spent money last year. And when we take a look at this, what I want you to do is focus on the number in the middle of the page, minus 88 million, oh, excuse me, $88 million. That's how much it cost last year to do business as Bethel Park School District on a full, cool, business accounting-type basis. You can see all the different ways you spend money. Instructional costs, 57 million last year. Operation and maintenance of plants, 7.5, so on and so forth. Move over one column, minus 16 million. What that is, is a revenue. Those are governmental grants, shared revenue, where they say to us, run a program on our behalf. Special education, Title I National School Run, so on and so forth. 16 million come to a net cost of education of about 72.1 million. We get a very small share of the EDV. That's the basic education pie, shared by all districts in the state. Our share happens to be close to 11 million, leaving a net cost of education of 1 million. That number in and of itself doesn't mean anything. But what we ask you to do is take 61 million and divide it by 88 million. Those are the three percentages that you see at the bottom of that page. What you're seeing is a trend that we are seeing in many other places where the percentage cost of education has actually fallen each year for the last three years, meaning that we're spending less Bethel Park dollars and a little more of somebody else's. That's a nice thing. Whether that trend will continue, only time will tell. Moving to page 12, our man in the letter has three important things that we'd like to discuss with you. The first of which is the general fund fund balance. Going back to what we said earlier, you have about a 4.2 million unreserved fund balance. That's the midpoint, actually a bit lower than we'd like to see it be. But nonetheless, it's a place to work from. When we take a look at the cafeteria fund, food service fund last year lost $97,000. A good bit of that, $49,000, was depreciation, such that the net cash outflow was about $50,000. It's not a bad place to be. We have districts that have lost in the hundreds of thousands in the food service fund. Chart 75, this represents your promises in your contract for continuation of health insurance. And we are not obligated to set any money aside for this, but the obligation exists. But what you've done as a board is you've recognized that you have that obligation. So what did you do? You've reserved some of your general fund fund balance. What we might consider doing here as just a suggestion, maybe move that money to a different fund so that it's isolated and protected from the day-to-day activity of the general fund. We're going to go to page 13 and cover the questions that came up a bit earlier about the reserve for Peasars. Last year, we spent 34.29% of every page we go on the time across. That's stunningly large. This year, 34.5%. And when we look at page 14, we have a chart that's kind of weird to read, but I want you to focus on the blue line at the top. It starts, it goes up a little bit, then it goes down, sort of levels off and continues to go up a little bit. That represents the Peasars funding level, how many assets they have versus how many promises they've made. What you can see here is that we're in a plan, not of our own making, but we're responsible for it, where that plan is less than 60% funded. As a measure of what that might mean, look at the green bar that goes level across to top. That represents 80% funding. If you're in a private pension, meaning that you don't work for a government, you might work for nonprofits, might work for hospitals, might work for a business, but those rules say that in a defined benefit plan that's less than 80% funded, that's endangered. So here we are at 60%, less than 60%. I guess I could go to my source and figure out what it means to be more than endangered. I haven't figured that one out yet. The worst thing is, and this speaks to our board member's question earlier, the red line represents how fast our Peasars rate increases at best. If you look all the way back there to the beginning of time that this chart shows, we were not even at 10%. Now we're 34.51. Now, they're telling us that it's going to level off and be nice for the next five to 10 years. I don't have a bird's eye of the ball. I don't know how they do either. But the point of it is that this is going to continue to be a major issue for a long time to come. So as of all, when you talk about what the reserve is that you need to have in your general fund for Peasars upsets and apple cuts crashes, keep this in mind. The number that you have may not be enough. Now, the final thing that we would say to you, the administration does a very good job with that for the audit. I'm very pleased, the board should be very pleased as well. The audit was smoothly. And I will tell you that we were thankful to be able to be here. We have some districts that, no, you're not allowed to come and visit. My father told me that for Christmas, you're not allowed to come and visit. I was like, well, Dad, then I won't see you for two years. It's hard to do an audit when you can't see and talk to someone. So we're grateful for that. The very last thing is, thanks to the board members. We do appreciate the opportunity to be the auditor. If any question, we're happy to answer them for you. Thank you all very much.
Can you, did you ask a question?
Yeah, you can begin.
Can you read the Joe over to page 10 again? Because I don't really understand what you said.
A presentation.
About the net unrestricted net position and all of that.
That's basically our long-term fund balance is what is there. And the reasoning of why most of our unrestricted net position is in such an upside-down figure, we're required to record our share of the unfunded Peasars liability on our long-term financial statements. Our number, let me pull it up real quick, but I believe it's around $130 million. For that reason, we'll never be positive, as long as that's the case, on our long-term statement in net position. None of the districts we do have a positive unrestricted number anywhere there. But basically, if that statement takes everything we own and everything we owe, puts it all in one place, that's what Canada does.
So that basically represents Bethel Park's share of the Peasars funding, future funding?
Pretty much. $130 million is our calculated share of the amount. Basically, they take the payroll from every district in the state, get a percentage of it, get the unfunded amount of Peasars, and then that share is yours. That's what they say. It doesn't mean you're going to go and pay it next year or anything like that. But say everything, and right now, that's Bethel Park's percentage of or share of that liability.
So does that, does that mean there's some kind of disconnected reality then between that slide and the very last slide with that chart done? You know, because I guess, you know, the last chart is still kind of short-term. It's going up three years. But, you know, are, in that calculation, are you forecasting that the slope or trend of those lines somehow drastically changed then?
The... That projection there is basically Peasars' projection of what's coming next. That's their, the funding levels are fact, going back from 20 prior.
Right.
Everything is forward is what they're telling us, what their rate's going to be and what they say their funding percentage is based on their calculations. That's not a calculation we do.
Yeah, and this doesn't show a liability view, but somewhere there should be a third line in there somehow that relates the liability to, you know, how they're currently funded and what the contributions are.
Yeah. I think that would be shown. Somewhere there'd be a third sign that shows the liability, isn't it? Maybe you could ref...
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, this shows what we're contributing. It shows what the fund balance is, but it's not showing what that total liability view is. You know, what, where we end up in, in the end.
No, not projected out to a long term. This is a right-now basis. It's not projecting like a present value calculation. None of that is in.
Yeah, so if there's a, you know, if there's a high percentage of people retiring in, say, 2026, it could put, and this is more of a question, it could put additional stress on the Peasars system
That is correct.
Change the slope of those lines.
That is right. I agree, yes.
Okay.
So back to slide 10. Just wanted a little clarification on something that was presented. The net capital asset, you expressed surprise that we were upside down with the newer building. Is there, can you elaborate on that?
Surprise that we're upside down and we have a newer building and why you think that?
Well, normally, you have a certain number of dollars of cost in a building, and the depreciation will go for 40 years. That's standard, we live 40 years of life when we do depreciation. But what that means is that the debt we have exceeds the cost of the building. Now, what it could mean is that all the other buildings in the district are older and don't have a large current value. The other thing that could mean in certain districts, if we have zero coupon bonds, those are bonds where you get a certain amount of money today and borrow it, and they accrete a value going upward. That can also cause this type of an upside-down situation. It's not something that you can readily correct, but the bond rating agencies, you look at the numbers, they don't like it when it's a model. And the only reason I am able to say that is I've participated in through those conversations with the rating agencies, the districts would say, well, we might as well audit it to talk. You know, they most of the time are okay with that. But that's one of the things that we've seen them focus on. So that's hence the reason that we mentioned that $6.4 million number.
And I'm really glad you brought up the bond rating agencies because that leads to a question that Mr. Christensen was talking a little bit about, the committed fund balance, along with the potential of like a mass retirement hitting us harder, that committed fund balance also deeply affects our bond rating. fund balance also deeply affects our bond rating, correct?
No doubt it probably has some impact, because those commitments do in turn reduce our unassigned fund balance. It doesn't mean that they shouldn't be there. I mean, there are those liabilities that are sitting out there waiting to happen. But seeing that unassigned fund balance being less than where we probably want it to be, no doubt has an impact on where our, we're seeing as far as the bond rating goes.
So I guess what I was asking is, last year, when you guys presented, we were talking about those obligations versus the committed funds. And if I recall correctly, at least correct me if I'm wrong in my speaking, having a healthy committed fund balance helps our, our bond rating, and that's a good rea-, that's another good reason to keep that healthy committed fund.
No doubt. Showing that you have funds set aside for these long-term liabilities is a good thing. It's a good thing. Doesn't mean we necessarily recommend leaving it all in the general fund. I mean, there's options for moving that money without locking it up into something, you can't use it for other items, but putting it into like a retirement fund of some sort. It can be used for many things, but it's not sitting there committed in our general fund year after year. That's what we see in a lot of districts. They don't, they may reserve, not saying there's not Peasars' reservations in there, that's, that's a frequent and common occurrence in a general fund. But many will move some over every year a little bit into it, like a retirement obligations fund can be used for retired health benefits if needed. They can have a plan for it. But it's not sitting there and we're not, you don't see that number in the general fund to make you, I guess, see it for more than what it is.
Yeah, okay, that's a good point.
That's a good point.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask one more question since we're sharing a microphone that's kind of off, off this area. And it's more of a point of curiosity. We talked about the cat period funding in this audit. In the perspective of a ninety-million-dollar budget, it kind of seems to be more of a mundane point. And I was, I just want a little more clarification for myself and for the public, why, why that's a focal point of the audit.
We see in a lot of districts that cafeteria fund with recurring losses can get out of control quick. They can lose, both, we're districts that are twenty percent of our size a year, and they're losing two-hundred thousand dollars a year. And while that number doesn't seem huge, maybe in our perspective, it can easily get out of hand. And for some districts, that's multiple mills in a year of raising taxes. They're having to cover with their general fund. And even in our management letter, what you'll see in that, our cafeteria fund is becoming upside down. It's, while it has a positive net position currently, that's basically fixed asset value. It doesn't have much money. We, we're going to need to budget that loss every year going forward. That cafeteria is probably not going to come back and all of a sudden have, be able to support itself. There's a large amount due to the general fund from the cafeteria, around forty million dollars. It's there. And that's going to continue to build unless we budget to cover some of that with our general fund money. And in the broad perspective, I can understand what you mean as far as it, it seems like it's a small point, but it's a very important operation that has to split your product. That's why.
Why do you think that is, Louis? Why, why, because at one time, and maybe not too many years ago, cafeterias were moneymakers. What happened?
I think regulations a lot of it. The requirements of what we're allowed to serve students, I think that's, that's been pushed down. Pre- reimbursement rates, I mean, I have analyzed them more, but I think a lot of this regulation over time. Truthfully, of all the districts we do, we see few cafeterias that are profitable. If you can be on either side of fifty thousand generally in a cafeteria, we say you're pretty, you're not doing too bad. I mean, you don't really want to lose money, but it's not there to hoard cash and make a bunch of money. You're not trying to make money off students. Break even would probably be ideal. So really, we're not in bad shape, but we're consistently losing money when that happens year after year. The general fund has to pick up the tab.
I, I just wondered if you had any recommendations in those areas, in that area. I know it's not, as Mr. Nagel said, it's not the hugest amount, but you don't like to see something like that, losing money consistently and that amount of money increasing every year.
It's, it's really something that's difficult to turn around. I mean, we've looked at this in, in many different districts to try to make it, gone in-house food service, food service companies, different things. And some just, it just doesn't come back. Like the, the losses just continue and continue and continue. And some of it's benefit packages, things in contracts. Sometimes that's the case. I'm not saying that's it here, but that's, those are things to monitor and look at every so often in your years.
So I have a question. At one point, you said there's no such thing as an index bank, and that our fund isn't up to the eight percent of, we're not near eight percent, and you recommend that we try to move towards eight percent.
Correct.
And that, and that we don't want to miss an opportunity in terms of going to the index when we have the opportunity to do that.
Well, there's no such thing as banking with index. But I think what he's referring to is that a one year of not taking a tax increase, you can't get that year back. So the next year, you're always, you're always going to miss out that increase. You're going to miss it next year, you're going to miss it the year after that, and you're going to miss it the year after that. So missing an opportunity isn't just passing it this year. You're passing it this year, and you're passing it every year going forward.
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
And it would be different if you had a situation where your cost never changed. Then that means you're going without government, so it's not that complicated.
It's always going to happen, right?
Most of it.
Any more questions? Thank you so much. You always do such a fine job. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
You know, I guess one, one question I had, just thinking about this, you know, the long-term net position. Is that something, and do you see other districts, do you see them developing a plan around that to reverse the direction of it? Because, you know, the direction of ours is going in the wrong direction. You know, it's, it's getting more negative. Is that something that where you recommend from an auditor that we at least have some plan in place to address the trend and to reverse it?
I can't say we have districts that develop a plan to make that go the other direction, but we probably would recommend, you don't want to see it going the wrong direction as we are seeing it now. It's something that would be difficult, it's difficult to turn around. Some of these reasons that are causing that are out of your hands. I mean, the Peasars' adjustment is out of your hands.
It's about five minutes ago.
Right.
So.
A plan.
We've not seen a district attempt a plan of a long-term financial statement turn around. We've seen them work very diligently to get the short-term, the fund level statement back to where they need to be. But in our case here, I think we all raised enough to try it. So I, I, I think you should, you know, and look at those items that participate in contributing to a minus twenty-four million and say, can we do anything with that number? And if the answer's no, then we move on and we take a different one. But what you may find in the long run of participating in that process is that you're going to get better at making the short-term decisions that have a huge impact later on. I think it's something worth doing. I'd like to think that, you know, if you were able to do something like that, that's something that would be worthy of sharing with other places.
Yeah, you know, at least if we understood what, what levers, at least if we understood what levers had the biggest impact in the short-term planning that have, you know, the greatest impact on that long-term, that'd be good. But I'm sure a lot of districts look at this kind of like the national debt, okay? It's like, it's so far down the road that we'll let somebody else deal with it, so.
Most districts look at that number and just walk on by it.
Yeah.
Really, that's, it is pushed out a number. Most are concerned with getting by this year, next year, and the future.
Right.
This is more than that. This is looking ten years down the road, twenty years down the road. And many, they don't have the capital to do it. They can't, or they don't understand it enough. Like, you're correct, most aren't. They see that Peasars' number, say, oh, it's the Peasars' number. There's nothing else we can do with this, and they're worried.
Yeah.
But I do think it is worthy of having correction.
Just, just a comment, though. I mean, this is a bigger problem than Bethel Park's problem. This is a state problem. This is a Peasars' board problem, et cetera. I mean, I don't know if they still do this, but Peasars was expecting an eight-point-eight percent return or eight percent return on their money. I don't know where they get that number. It's not happening in the world today. So things that are totally out of our control are, you know, and if, if this fund goes belly up, then it's everyone in the state's problem. So this is a, I, I grant that we should do everything we can. I'm not disagreeing with that. But there are so many things that are not in our control that I don't know how we could even get, I think we need to do as much as we can locally, keep our ship a sail.
The, the biggest number is the Peasars' liability. That's the biggest problem. There's limits to what you can do with that. There are other figures right now. I mean, your, your long-term bonds, the actuary study, the GADU seventy-five Steve talked about with, that's our long-term promises in our contracts. Now, you know, that's difficult to change, but contracts can be looked at. That's something that's controlled somewhat. I mean, it's more controlled than Peasars', it's not a hundred percent. But there are things that can be looked at here. But you're correct, the majority of it are a hundred million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion for an intent to adopt the agenda for business items.
Thank you, Senator.
Moved by Mrs. Spicuzza and seconded by Mr. Christensen. All in favor, Doug, are you going to put up the?
Voting is open.
Didn't come up at eye on reboot.
Mr. Spicuzzo?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, we have no public comments that have been sent on the Google form, but I don't know, is there anybody who's called four-one-two-eight-five-one-six-nine-one-one? Okay, I'm going to repeat that number if you'd like to call at the end of the meeting. Four-one-two-eight-five-one-six-nine-one-one. That's the number for you to make a public comment, or if you would like, you can still fill out the Google form and make your public comment on that. This is the business meeting, and then we'll be moving to the committee meeting. So the public comments will be at the end of the committee meeting.
Can I ask Mr. Ryer to put that phone number in the comments of the Facebook stream?
Um, yes, I think I can do that.
I'll repeat it again. Four-one-two-eight-five-one-six-nine-one-one. And that number is also on the board page on the website. Mr. McGregor, would you like to take the personnel committee,
I'm sorry, I was trying to hit the mute button. So we have three items on docket tonight. Now, is this the one where we say, any questions?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're going to need to move them and then ask for any questions.
Yeah, because we.
Let's do them, let's do them, let's do them individually, Mr. McGregor.
Yeah, so we have an appointment of personnel, number one.
Okay, I need a, I need a second.
Is there a motion?
He makes the motion.
Second.
Okay, it's only a motion, but I second it.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. McGregor and seconded by Mr. Christensen regarding the appointment of personnel. Any questions? Comment, okay, Mr. Mcg-, Mr. McCoslin?
Motion carries. Okay, the second one is the MOU with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. So I move that be pressed forward.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spicuzzo. Ms. Dongo, would you like to sign about it?
Yeah, I'll just. The second was made by.
Oh, I'm sorry. The second was made by Mr. Spicuzzo.
It's okay.
Was it really?
Yeah, it was very.
A brief summary. It was you? Did I say Spicuzzo?
Yeah.
Sorry. The MOU that is up for vote right now is relates, relates to the reopening of school on the district's transition, is in the process of transitioning to four-day in-person instruction. And so the MOU outlines terms and conditions of that in relation to the professional bargaining unit.
Any questions?
I'm going to ask the question because I know there's, I've gotten inquiries about it. On number four.
Speak closely.
On number four D, I know this magnitude. It says, "Students in most in need on grades, attendance, and documented concerns will be invited by the district to return to four-day in-person learning. A form will be used by the building principal and the teachers to determine who is eligible for additional in-person instruction. At each level, students may return to four-day before the proposed date if the student meets the criteria to determine on a case-by-case basis by the principal in collaboration with the IST teacher at the elementary level and guidance counselors at the middle school and high school level." Have any, has this been told to parents? How to parents? What's the inquiry for that? And how are we going to start that process? And I know Mr. Nagel had an additional question, if you want to ask that.
No, I'll let those questions be answered.
Janet, Dr. Awark, are you on the meeting?
I am. Would you like me to answer?
Could you respond to this question?
Absolutely. The, the form in and of itself talks about is, the, the process starts for those kids that are exhibiting either anxiety, failing grades, or a significant amount of absenteeism with our online program that are outside of the group of kids that are coming back full four days a week. So with that being said, there, the teachers and the principals, the guidance counselors, IST, are looking at that criteria first and then reaching out to those parents to let them know that they, that, that there could be a meeting held to evaluate whether or not bringing the kid back early is, is recommended. If any of our parents in the meantime that are listening, they would like to explore that option, they of course can call the schools and set up meetings, but once again, the criteria that we're using are, at this point in time, are kids that are struggling significantly emotionally, if they are academically failing, or if they are exhibiting excessive absenteeism with the online program. So, and then part of that, that form that we're using is the identification of how we can bring kids back and still meet social distancing and, and all of those pieces as well. So any parent that would like to reach out to the, the school, they can do that. However, the document that we're using as criteria is pretty specific in the fact of the matter is, is it's based on need.
My question is, do they have to meet all of those qualifications? One of those qualifications? A mix, you know, one, three, five, is there a set thing, or is this?
A mix, you know, 1-3-5, is there a set thing, or is this totally based on administration and teacher and our guidance counselor?
It is, it is based on need, Mrs. Turner. So, what that basically means is if we have the, the first round of the teachers and the principals going through the criteria to see what students meet that need, those, those parents would be reached out to first because they would meet the criteria. And if somebody meets all of the criteria, the five, you know, the eight points or whatever it is, then, of course, they're at a greater need, and there, there, of course, are students that we would want to bring back quicker. So, it's, it's not necessarily that it's meeting one need or no need, or, you know, three needs, it's, it's based on need. And it's, and it's, the process is initiated at the school level.
So, Dr. O'Rourke, Mrs. Nagel, how many students have we identified that have these needs that haven't been identified with an IEP or 504 or GIE?
Uh, Mr. Nagel, I'll be honest with you, I don't know that answer. Um, I, you know, it's, it probably, when I ask the principals to give me a roundabout figure of when they pulled the second nine weeks' grades, all in all, of the 4,000 kids that we have currently in Bethel Park, totally K through 12, I would say that the number was right around 200 of the 4,000 in the different buildings, most being at the high school because there's more kids there, and absenteeism is a driving factor which then is leaving, leading to some failures. So, right now, it's about 200. I don't have that number right, that exact number, but it, would I, the roundabout was about 200 total.
That's 200 total, including students with identified needs prior to COVID and online learners?
It could be, or it could not be. I did not ask for those kids that don't have any type of IEP or designation. We just looked at kids that were meeting those, the criteria that we had. So, I don't, some of them may very well have IEPs. Now, we had already, any student with an IEP has already been invited back. We've been, we've had the, the kids with IEPs four day, up to four days a week, based on their NORA since November. Whenever we were in school, they were given the opportunity. Now, if we were full remote, they, of course, were full remote as well, but they've been invited back since November, if not before. August. Yeah.
I have to say, I'm very disappointed that you don't have an answer to that and that you haven't looked into it because I recall myself and other board members asking you to look into it as early as October, particularly about students who aren't identified with needs already, who may be struggling.
Mr. Nagel, with all due respect, I sent the board a list of those numbers last week. I just don't have them in front of me. I gave, I sent everybody an email with those numbers per building of those kids that are identified, of meeting the failing criteria. I just don't have it in front of me. If you'd give me a few minutes, I'm sure I can find it, but I, I sent it to you guys last week. Mr. Mojra could ask for it.
And, and I think that this discussion actually doesn't deal with the MOU.
Right.
I think it deals with the reopening of schools and, and things like that. So, I, if there's any further discussion regarding the MOU, but the discussion about how we're bringing these students back or the process and so forth is actually not the MOU that is on the table right now in order to be voted on. So, we can bring that, we can look for that at another time. Discuss that another time. Any other questions about the MOU? Okay, Mr. McCoslin?
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Okay, the third item under personnel is change of assignment.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McGregor and seconded by Ms. Turner. Any questions about the change of assignment? Okay, voting open, please?
Voting, voting is open. Motion carries.
Before we move forward on that, I was just wondering, Mr. Christianero, is this person going to be responsible also for any of the athletic duties, or has that been decided?
No, the athletic duties do not have any responsibility with these two open positions. I think that was, Dr. Jansani wanted to talk to you as a board about the athletic piece of it, so there hasn't been any determination on that as of yet.
Okay, I thought, I thought that those two positions were going to be assigned athletic duties at some point, so.
No, the one was the front desk and the other one was the activities.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. Christensen?
In the finance committee area, we have one item, and I move to adopt the 21, 22 preliminary general fund budget.
I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Turner. Do you want, Mr. McCoslin?
Yeah, I was going to ask, Mr. McCoslin, if you could just give a little bit of explanation of the purpose for voting on this tonight, and, and we, I think we talked about this in the finance committee meeting. I'm going to close it on.
Uh, Mr. McCoslin, if you could address just the, the reason for putting this on the agenda tonight, the purpose for voting on it, and then, I think we talked about this in the finance committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, but maybe you could just mention the, you know, the, the additional steps that we'll go through to refine this budget.
Sure. Um, this is the preliminary budget. This allows us to, as a board, continuing to work on the budget through May. So, we'll have several revisions after this, but as the preliminary budget stands right now for the 21, 22 school year, we anticipate revenues of just over $91 million, expenditures of slightly over $92 million, leaving us with a current deficit of about $1.3 million. This deficit and budget also have a 3.5% tax increase in it. Does not mean that that's what the tax increase will be, but that is what the projection is right now. The next steps are to continue to refine the budget in both areas. A lot of estimates had to be made because we don't have hard numbers on many of the expenditures and revenues yet. It is our best guess at this point. We'll be meeting throughout March, April, and May to refine the numbers. Our proposed final budget will be presented to the public in May, and then, final adoption of the budget for the 21, 22 school year will happen in June. That's, that's the, this is just the current status, and that's the timeline for approval. I don't know if there's anything else you wanted me to cover?
No, I think that's good.
Um, this, uh, doc, the document for the budget is posted on our website and is in board docs, as well as the presentation that was presented to the board at its February finance committee meeting.
Thank you, Mr. McCoslin.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Mr. McCoslin or any comments? Okay, Mr. McCoslin?
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, will you take each item separately, please?
Yes. Um, there are revisions to the policy for the third and final reading with 103, 203, 247, 249, 252, 317.2, and 824. A move for final reading.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Christensen. Any questions about any of these seven policies? With this final reading, we will be voting on them tonight. Okay, Mr. McCoslin?
Voting is open. Motion carries.
The next one is the third and final reading for approval of policy 011, which is the principles for government and leadership.
Hey, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nagel. I'm very excited about this. We've never had this. This is a new policy, comes from the PSBA recommendation. And for any of you out there who are interested in running for school director, this is a perfect document for you to read in order to start that investigation of what is involved and how school board directors are committed to work and what we will do as we advocate, lead, govern, plan, evaluate, communicate, and act as board directors. It's a, it's a fabulous document that involves goal-setting yearly and things like that that we have not done in the past, at least during my tenure as a director. So, um-
We did this year. We, we did set goals for the board.
Right, we did, exactly.
This is the first year that we did do that, so.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. This is exciting to have this as a policy now.
Correct.
Because it will direct future boards as to what is, what the procedure should be in policies and so forth. So, any other comments or questions about this?
No, we also get a new poster for over in the far wall. It's not blue and white anymore. It seems to be very colored.
Very colorful.
Ms. Greg can, you know, go ahead and ask for that in the next couple of weeks, but it's very colored from what I remember, so it'll add to the room.
Awesome. Okay, Mr. McCoslin?
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Okay, and then, the second and third readings is the 303.1 step placement for professional employees. Do you want to discuss it tonight, or are you ready?
We're not, we don't need a second because we're not voting on it. But, uh, Mr. Christianero, there were questions you gave us some information about. Do you want to talk about this particular?
Yes.
Yeah, you had questions in kind, what other school districts did in regards to this step placement of new hires for professional staff. So, I was able to get local districts, they were kind enough to answer my phone calls, and so I put a little sheet together for you if you have any questions.
It looks pretty consistent with what our plan will be.
Yeah.
Although the, the policy is going to be general, but the plan, the specifics of the plan will be an administrative regulation.
Correct, yeah. So, the policy will give the administration the, the opportunity to put together an administrative regulation that would go with the policy, and that's a document that will be attached to the policy when the policy is approved.
Right, and then the administrative regulation can be asked, the administration can come back to the board and ask for, you want to go through a hopeful policy review, ask for exceptions and/or modifications to that.
And I just want to add too, I think what I'll call the very important part of this policy is that it gives what the district is doing in terms of its hiring practices, objectivity, and based on objective criteria, so that we don't have to be concerned about the risk that we hired one new employee under one condition and another new employee under another condition. So, that consistency is extremely important. It also gives the district a little bit of latitude on recognizing that we may, on occasion, be hiring someone with prior experience that we would like to recognize in terms of drawing them to Bethel Park School District. But again, it's based on objective criteria.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting before we move to committee meeting. So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Turner and seconded by Mr. Spacuzza to adjourn this meeting. Mr. McCoslin?
Voting is open.
Okay, I-
Mr. McCoslin, this is Barry, I vote yes.
I vote yes.
I exited the meeting.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we need to move to the committee meeting in board docs. The public does also. Okay, Mr. Scowzo, if you'd like to take the five items?
Well, I'm very good. It could be on the side.
Well, there, there are several that I know we're going to be talking about underneath that, um, we have time. So, maybe take them individually.
Okay.
Okay, under curriculum committee, item one. Agreement with the World of Learning Institute. Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to contract with the World of Learning Institute to provide online instruction for one Spanish course for the remainder of 2020, 2021 school year, or at such time a person is hired, whichever is less, at a cost not to exceed $5,060. Any discussion?
Yes, could someone please talk about this for us? This is probably in conjunction with the MOUs about the Spanish teachers and what we're doing, because I, I believe at this time, although we're, we've hired someone, we, we don't have access to that person right away, and so this is temporary?
Uh, that's correct. That's correct, Mrs. Stovas. Um, we have, Mr. Vilani worked with the teachers at the high school, with our current foreign language teachers, our current Spanish teachers, to cover most of the courses, the classes that the hired employee left. He had one class that was unable to be covered by one of our current Spanish teachers, and this is covering that Spanish, that class until the new teacher arrives, and I believe that the expectation of her arrival will be in March.
March 26.
Thank you, Mr. Christianero.
No problem.
Any questions about this particular item, then?
So, this is a change because at first we thought that they were going to have to go into the world languages also in an excess, in a cost that was going to come close to additionally what we are currently at for the Latin program. So, what is this? I know there's a cost with the MOU, but there is a cost savings?
Uh, yes, there is a pretty significant savings with our teachers covering the classes. with our teachers covering the classes, yes.
I think we just need to say thank you to Mr. Vilani and those two Spanish teachers for being able to step up to the plate at this point in time and take on some additional duties.
Absolutely.
Help the students.
Okay. Item 2, Purchase of the Behavioral and Emotional Screening System. Board of Directors approves the administration's recommendation to purchase the Behavioral and Emotional Screening System through Pearson Assessments at a cost not to exceed $4,100, paid with funding from the CARES ESRS grant. Any questions, comments?
Is this... Ms. Sutton, are you on? Is this something that we've already talked about previously?
We talked about it administratively related to the CARES grant. And the CARES grant is looking for new purchases in certain categories related to COVID. And the board has many times talked about needs to identify students with social, emotional, behavioral needs. So, it does fit there.
Thank you.
Dr. Sutton, Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Mr. Modrick, this program, is it being used by any other districts that we're aware of, or is this a brand-new program?
I believe it is a newer screener that fits in with the BASK, which is a behavior assessment scale for children that has been used nationally for multiple years. This is a new screener tool, more related to social, emotional learning. And there are different forms that a teacher would fill out, the parent would fill out, and depending on the age of the student, that the student would actually also complete. And the form would be this... The result would be the screener that would note the level of at-risk for that particular student.
And the screener, obviously, is someone within your office, right?
The school psychologist, yes, would be part of this process. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 3, the 2021-2022 School Calendar. Any comments?
I want to talk real quick. I'm trying, I know, and it's this mass.
You're going to take it off.
I have a couple of questions. In the past, I know we have had board discussions about offering additional tutoring. I know we did it over the Christmas break. If we push this back a week, and there are several drafts, I think the public was only given one draft. If we push this back one week to start on the 31st, that gives us a whole week of tutoring in August for the... For students that are in need. The other thing it does is it really does not mess up a second draft that we were given to have graduation on the 11th. The students would still get out by the 9th or 10th and still have graduation the same week, like we have done for the past few years. I would really, as a board member, like those students that need additional support this summer to be able to get that. I would be in my next... That's the first thing. And my next one is why are all these two-hour delays on a Friday? That seems to be counterintuitive to absenteeism issues. So, those are my two things. I would like to see a draft where we would start on the 31st. We would still be out by the second week in June, and it's not this first full week in June. So, that's part of it. And graduation on the 11th. So, we're not moving too much based on the second draft that the board has. But it would give us a whole week of tutoring for students and parents to have that extra week in the summer.
I'm not clear, Mrs. Turner, on why you think starting the 31st would give us more time for tutoring. We have... We have June, we have July, we have the beginning of August.
We don't have June. We don't get out till the 11th again, so we're...
Well, the second half.
I just... I think the extra week would give a lot of ability to parents and to teachers. I know, you know, it's been discussed, and we're not getting out... We're technically starting the same time we did this year, and we're not getting out any later. But it would give students an extra week.
One of my concerns, too, is that as we discuss and develop a remediation tutoring program over the summer, within short notice, this holiday break, we had over 100 students, Dr. O'Rourke?
Yes.
With more time and more publicity, I probably imagine, hopefully, that we'll have a lot more numbers. So, I don't know whether it would be staffing-wise, be able to accommodate those numbers all with one week or two-week block. I just think we just... A little more research on our end on the value of having a remediation tutoring program over the summer, what that potentially would look like, and then how that impacts on the backend of the summer and the summer that started the next school year.
Well, let me say, and we can let Mrs. Wells talk about this, but I keep in mind, when we do invite children in for remediation, it goes back to our conversation about youngsters in need that we have objective criteria and data as to who we're going to invite to be a part of these programs. I just personally believe that there's a real readiness on the part of students in general on this... On this last week or so of August. I think it's our... I was actually very impressed with the calendar, and I think it takes us back to what we have done consistently over the year. I don't think, if, Mrs. Turner, I thought it would have a negative impact on any tutoring program we might have. I could see it. I do not see that as happening. I think we can more than make that happen. And so, I think it's good. I think the students graduating at the end of that first week of June, it's really a smooth calendar that moves right into that last... That first Saturday in June. I think, by and large, the calendar works. I can go back and ask your question about that Friday to our services. And Beth, do you want to comment on that? Why they seem to be on a Friday?
Sure. We had gone back and forth with discussion that sometimes parents like them all on a consistent date, on a consistent day of the week, that that made it easier for them to plan. So, the one version has that, the other version does not. We can easily move those if that's something that the board would like to be adjusted.
I just think Fridays is asking for absenteeism, especially at the elementary level, if you're looking for a three-day weekend.
I didn't hear you came...
I said, I think Fridays with a two-hour delay, with the elementaries then not starting till 12:30 or 11:30, I just think there's going to be some absenteeism because parents will see it as a... You know, it could be a three-day weekend with four hours of education. I have large concerns over that. And the other thing is, I'm looking for consistency. The last two years, we have always started the last week in August. Parents need to be able to plan. That's what I've heard for weeks and weeks and weeks, is we can't plan. We can't plan. You need consistency. And if you go back and look, last year, we started, you know, September 1st, August 30th. The year before that, it was the same thing. It was two years... It was almost three years ago before we start... We started earlier. So... Because I did pull my school calendar. So, it's been several years since we started that. We need to be consistent so parents can plan.
I have one more proponent for... Just again, we're talking drafts right now. Some of the latest information I've been hearing, I don't know how accurate is that, you know, the CDC is believing that everyone, adults, children, should be able to be vaccinated by the end of summer. Even still then, it's not a pinpoint date. Just give us some wiggle room. So, again, we have two drafts, starting with school on the 24th. I'm just asking, we started another draft, three, with starting on the 31st?
I think that we didn't intend to start on the 31st this last year. We actually were starting the week before, but with COVID, we front-loaded all the in-service.
That is correct.
And so, we actually were going to start the week before. And we have consistently started the last... This week of... Within the last week and a half before Labor Day for the last couple of years. And I think the comment, if Dr. Wells or Dr. O'Rourke can comment on this, is that it was involving more student instructional time before testing time, if I recall, something like that.
That is correct.
That's correct. To have more student days prior to any type of standardized testing, within reason, of course. But yeah, that was why we always started the second to the last week of August.
And we always also seemed to start in the middle of the week with the students because the comment was for the younger students, it was really hard to do an entire week for them that first week of school. Is that also what I recall?
Yeah, there was... Yeah, there was concern. I think it was Mrs. Turner had made a statement that a full week is very difficult for the kids to get back into the swing of things. And we've tried to make it a reduced week in some fashion.
Yeah, and I want to know, it sounds like, and I don't want to oversell it, that we did not just sit down and develop two calendars. We developed several calendars. We spent a great deal of time on refining those calendars. The option that we're giving you is what I would call Option 1. I think it does address all of the issues that you want addressed. And it's a very solid... It's a very solid calendar. Mrs. Dobus added some other things. It is the recommendation of the administration, this calendar. And also, we also reviewed a couple of options with the Federation, and they believed that Option 1 was a good option. We can note the changes that you talked about. And we can make some of those accommodations, such as the... Such as the short day in services and moving them away from Friday. But it's an excellent calendar, and it really does accomplish what we're looking to accomplish for the kids. And I would say, too, and we've had a large discussion about this, I've seen over the years, as many people who work directly with children, there's more, even though we're only talking a week or so here, there is more of a readiness and an eagerness for kids to engage in learning at the beginning of the year than at the end. And when you start to move it into June or later in June, sometimes many kids shut down on you. So, it's a good crisp calendar. We didn't just present two. We worked with three or four calendars. We kept whittling them down. We almost spent a day on just going through this. So, you need to be aware of that. And it is our recommendation as the school district staff and administration.
I'm going to go back again, then, and say if we're not looking at the 31st, again, if we start the middle of the week and slow in, that would be the 25th. Because we're asking for like two full weeks before these kids get any kind of... That's a lot to ask of K to 2. We've said that. I mean, those have been my statements in the past, and I will stick with that. That's a lot to ask of K to 2 to just start off. Four days, and then five days, and then four days. We did three, and then five, and then four. It might be a little easier, but it's again... They might be eager, but it's a lot on them.
Well, I, you know, I get your point, and I've heard that point before. Again, we can sit down and we can take a look at that. But we're happy with the calendar as is. But to, you know, accommodate some of the board questions, I think we can take a look at that. But we wouldn't want to go past the 25th. And we are willing to move some of those act eighty days so that they're not always on a Friday. But we'd like to do it in such a way that we maintain the rest of the calendar as is. And Beth, wouldn't we be able to do that if we accommodated that move to the 21st? In other words, it would just be bringing teachers back? You know, actually starting them Friday, Monday, and then Tuesday Room Prep, and Wednesday then...
Dr. D, the problem, and I know we talked about this, the problem with moving the first day to the 25th, that would push the student last day until Friday, June 2nd. And that means records day would be on Monday, the 6th. So, that would push graduation then a week after the student's last day. And talking to Dr. Jan Sany, they, you know, utilize that teacher records day for graduation purposes.
I wanted to make a comment about that. In my experience, the last couple of years on the board, we've been reluctant to have graduation with no wiggle room.
Correct.
And so, regardless of what we do with the rest of the calendar, I'd like the administration to consider graduation on June 11th. Now, I know we might never have a snow day again because now we have remote instruction. But we were always concerned about if we have to delay the calendar, then we have to delay graduation. And it's not easy for people to change that date in a calendar. So, in your discussion this week, as you continue to go over it, I just would like you to think about whether or not we want to have it on the 3rd or the 4th or on the 11th as what you come back with for your recommendation next week.
And that was the other situation this year, Mrs. Dobus, on why we had graduation almost a week after it initially ended.
Well, the only thing about that is, and I do make this comment, and I'll note this because I think they're workable changes, but kids who are graduating and going on to, let's say, military, going on to colleges, going... And you talked about family vacations. It seems to me that I've gotten less complaints when kids, particularly the seniors who are moving on to another point in their life. I don't want to say get graduation out of the way, but have it done as early as they need to do it. But we can talk about that.
But our military students, if they're gone past years, they're leaving the middle of May.
Yeah.
They're graduating early. So... Or they're leaving school early for that situation. So, I believe Dr. Jan Sany and Dr... Or Mr. Vilani are on. But our military students are not at graduation.
Well, they were this year. I mean, there were cases, definitely, because I was at... Oh, I think we had four ceremonies. I was at all of them, and there were, Kim.
Right, but not always.
Yeah.
Ms. Turner, if I can just add... If I can just add, it's Dr. J. Most of our military students do attend graduation. There's maybe one or two that leaves early. So, we usually average about 10 or more students that we... That receive their diploma first. And week delay, I just want to remind everybody, we had that delay in there for other cancellations, if you know what I mean. It had nothing to do with weather. Those cancellations, hopefully, we would take other approaches rather than closing school day.
Beth, where... I mean, since we're having an open discussion, Zeb, based on your experience, and is Mr. Joe there? Mr. Vilani, are you there?
I am here as well.
Yeah. I mean, you might as well put it on the table. Do you have a preference for moving it right into Saturday, the 4th, or are you okay with the 11th? Zeb, why don't you start?
Let me start, if you will. I happen to lead 26 graduations as a head principal and three others as an assistant. And I have to tell you, I agree with Dr. De...
And I have to tell you, I agree with Dr. Diempirio, that when we hit June, students are of the mindset that seniors are ready to move on, and that having June classes really are not effective. And I even see, saw that with undergrad as well. So my recommendation is not to have a full week delay, although I respectfully understand that there could be situations that could push a graduation. But I've not seen it in the 14 years I've been here. We've always had graduation on the day that we've had, had it on the calendar.
Joseph, where are you?
I'm here as well. You know, as leading the first graduation this year is Bethel Park, obviously, we're discussing next year. In the past, we've had that wiggle room because of the other cancellations. It is a tight window with one or two days. But at the same time, with the new procedures and the elimination of snow days and things like that, it is possible. I also see where Ms. Wells made a good point there. If, if we end on a Friday and bring teachers back on a Monday, it is a long week as opposed to a two, three day gap. So, you know, I respect the decision either way. We'll be ready to go for graduation. Ideally, you have a couple of days between there, but again, a long drawn out week might not be the best as opposed to a two, three day window there.
Okay, so Joe, I'm, I'm going to push you a little bit for a recommendation. Are you saying stay with the 4th, or are you looking at the 11th?
I'm fine with either. So if we stayed with the 4th, if any of those other changes, I'll say go with the 4th, but if any other changes impact it, then obviously that might open the consideration.
Yeah, yeah, I have to be, yeah. I, I hear you, Mr. Vilani, because so many things can happen. And we can actually have school end on the 8th and still have graduation on the 11th. So anyway, we've, you've got lots of our ideas.
Okay.
We're just asking if you take a look at it again and come back with your recommendation next week that we would then vote on.
I just would not want to bring seniors back on a Monday after graduation.
Exactly. You wouldn't be bringing them back. Okay, and then, go ahead, Mr. Scalzo, the next item.
Okay. Item four, local holidays. For school records approved, administration recommendations approve the following dates as local holidays, November 29th, 21st, September 24th, 21st, September 27th, 21st, September 28th, 21st, and September 29th, 21st.
Would somebody like to explain, do you all know what local holidays are and what that entails? Okay, never mind them.
Number five, discussion of cyber program development.
Dr. Diempirio, do you want to go over what you have talked to Mr. Linowski and Mr. Vilani about in terms of this? And, and what we're looking, we're, we're looking at this for next year, and we want the public to be aware of the fact that we're researching it for scheduling purposes and so forth in the next couple of months.
Yes, I would. Just yesterday, Mr. Vilani, myself, Mr. Linowski met, and we had quite a lively discussion kind of around the objective of doing what, this year being remote, being hybrid has taught us a lot about, you've remote instruction benefits, how it can be better delivered. So we're taking a look at two things and hoping to make a report to the board either at next month's meeting or sooner, about, one, taking a look at how we can improve our present outside cyber program run by Mr. Linowski. Is there, is there a better program out there? Is there a more effective program out there? Is there a more updated program? And they're in the process of scheduling some meetings with some other companies that offer various platforms to see if that's possible. And if it isn't, we stay where we are. The other thing that it's taught us as well is that some of our students, K through 12, have responded pretty well to the remote or online instruction. So we're taking a look at, and while I've told Mr. Linowski and I've told Mr. Vilani, I'm very impressed because I think it's a pretty ambitious undertaking. They're thinking that the time is right, as they described it, the iron is hot for developing a program that involves our Bethel Park teachers, our Bethel Park curriculum, our Bethel Park program, and our Bethel Park diplomas to be completely online. So we're, we're following certain steps in trying to make that occur. They believe that they can put those steps in place and have them ready for the board's approval, and we should be able to move forward with that next year if everything falls into place. So I think we have two, what I would call by the district, what I would refer to as very, very innovative programs. And I think the board should be pleased and proud that the staff is working so hard on this. Mr. Vilani has provided a major leadership role as, past Mr. Linowski. Mrs., Dr. Aurora has provided a major leadership role as, past Mr. Jan Sannie. So we're, we're moving ahead with that, and they're confident, I don't say more confident than me because I've started so many new programs, but they're feeling very confident that they can make this happen by the next school year. So I, I think it's good news. I think it addresses that whole issue of providing our students, K through 12, with individualized choices in an age of cyber instruction as, as we're moving through 2021.
Mr. Vilani or Mr. Linowski, do you want to weigh in at all on this?
I can, if you want me to. Joe, you want me to go first?
Go ahead, Brian, start it off, absolutely.
Okay, so what we have is, we're, we're looking at, at adding a layer to our education program. So we have our traditional brick and mortar program, and then we also have our asynchronous cyber program, which has existed for 10 years now. And what we're looking at now is a layer of synchronized, or yes, synchronized remote with utilizing Bethel Park faculty and Bethel Park curriculum. Now, why are we thinking this, that we can do this? Is because we're doing it right now. So this isn't anything new. We are doing synchronized remote every day. We did today, in fact. And so the timing is perfect. And the timing is now, is, is we, if we wait another year, what would be the purpose of that? If we could do it now, and timing is essential because, not so much for me at the elementary level, but for Mr. Vilani at the high school level, they're getting ready to schedule. And so he would need to allocate teachers if we want to do a synchronized remote layer. We feel that it can be done. We feel that the teachers will be receptive to it, or the Federation will be receptive to it as well. So that, we're just talking about taking the steps that need to be taken there, and I think we can do a lot with, without touching a whole, without making a whole lot of changes. Like I said, we're doing it right now.
Mr. Vilani, do you want to weigh in?
No, Mr. Linowski introduced it very well. You know, obviously, you know, COVID provided a major disruption to how we provide instruction and learning opportunities. You know, as we come to the end, or we get closer to the end of the 2020-21 school year, you know, we have to look ahead, not only to the lasting impacts of the pandemic, but also, as Mr. Linowski said, we've introduced a new form of learning. You know, with that, obviously, with the other schools out there and cyber charter platforms, in addition to, you know, the LMS, we, our teachers have developed and they've created these opportunities. We have lots of students that deal with emotional needs, anxiety, depression. Some students can't access their learning, and it forces them to different learning opportunities. I think we'd be remiss to just say that we're going to go back to the way we were without exploring options to provide our students with Bethel Park curriculum from Bethel Park teachers, that we could really pioneer and be progressive in, in something here that is new, unique, and better than what we've provided in the past. And hopefully, like I said, a new front, teaching the way we currently teach, but kind of structuring it in a way that we can get back to our normal in-school learning, but still have an option with our teachers, teaching our classes for those students that may choose or may need to remain remote beyond this year and into the future.
And let me add to that. If we do not offer a synchronized remote, someone will. And I think that you're always going to have, now that we've done this for, for several months, you are going to have families, you're going to have students that want the synchronized remote. They don't want to come into our school, but they still want to get their education. So if we want our kids back, we've lost a lot of kids this year, that's no secret. We want to get them back in our district. Now what we can do is go to these students that we have lost and say, what do you want? Do you want traditional brick and mortar? Do you want asynchronous learning? Do you want synchronized learning? So we can offer all three, and that would make us quite innovative. And we're not changing a whole lot. This is something we're doing right now. We're doing all three of these right now.
Well, I'd like to tell you and Dr. Diempirio and Mr. Vilani, that we are very excited that you are doing this, because this is something the board has been talking about lately, and this is good that you are moving forward. I'd like to ask Mr. Christensen to explain what we are looking for next month in terms of this.
Yeah. Now, guys, this is fantastic that we're thinking like this. There is potential out there for us to do really well at this, and, you know, to benefit every student, you know, regardless of, you know, whatever reasons that they, they can't or don't want to participate in the classroom in education. But the, the request that I have when you come next week is, I, next month, yeah, sorry, or next week, whenever you're ready. But I'd like to look at this in the context of a business plan, not some slides that show the platform or things like that. And what I'd like to see in the business plan is, of course, what's the objective? And hopefully, it's to draw more of these students, these 150 students or so that are in cyber learning this year, draw them back into the district. I'd like to see some kind of validation, either through surveys, maybe 15, 20, 25 people, where we've talked to them about what they like about the current cyber program, what the current gaps are. And I'd like to see some validation or reassurance that our solution fills those gaps of the other cyber programs. Otherwise, we're going to go through a lot of work, a lot of effort on your side. We're going to go through some investment into additional tools, and then we're going to be disappointed that we don't get the kind of results that we're expecting. So I'd like to see that kind of validation. I'd also like to see what is it that, of course, from the, the finance side, what are the investments that we're going to be making in this? And how do we think that those investments will be offset by additional, I guess you could call it revenue, or, or additional expense reductions on our side that would normally go into paying charter schools? So those are, you know, just, but, you know, I'm just looking for more of a business plan presentation than just an introduction into what the platform and the curriculum is going to be. Because I think those are the decisions that we need to make.
And, and I would say that, and I think Mr. Vilani, Mr. Linowski understands that is the, if you will, marching order, very, but I think the other important part of it that we have to think of is, we are in 2021 trying to reach all students in a more effective way to increase learning. And that, so that's really, at least when Joe and Brian and Janet and Zed talked about it, the passion was it's opening up all these other doors to reach kids that may be the traditional sitting in a classroom and, sitting in a classroom in front of a teacher is not necessarily working for all children. So that part of us there, but of course, in public schools, certainly after we had our, our financial audit presentation, it's always based on a business plan, and it has to be that type of thinking also in 2021.
And like we said in the beginning, tremendous opportunity. There is a need, especially after we've been through this year. I just want, I would just like to see that evidence that says that the path we're going down, I mean, we're serving a market, we have customers, and we need to make sure that our product is going to be welcomed by our customers. Otherwise, there's no point in doing it, so.
Mr. Linowski?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Linowski?
Yeah.
This is Mr. Modra. You said 10 years we've been working through, you've been working through the waterfront program, correct?
Well, there's, there's waterfront, and then there's also another product we use is EdgeSeer. I, you have to think of me, when we talk about our cyber program, I'm like an insurance broker that can sell you Allstate and, and State Farm and all this. We have a bunch of cyber programs. So when someone says, hey, this one's not a good fit for me, we're not locked into one program. We have no long-term contract. So with waterfront, there's about five or six different curriculums, online curriculums. And the same with EdgeSeer, they have about five or six different ones. So I could meet the needs of every child based on, on those two programs. We've never locked into one curriculum.
Well, but with that, what I was going to get to is, how many, over the years, how many students of the district have you served, have been served through these programs to date?
Oh, you mean like total kids? We, we average, we've, we've been as high as 150 students in a year, but the last few years, we've averaged about 50 students per year. But we were real high for a while. When I started, we really got them all back, and then we kind of just hung out around 50, and we've maintained that the last several years.
Okay. And again, with, if I recall, with those programs there, they still are Bethel Park students and are able to participate in extracurricular activities, correct?
That is correct. Everything that we have, from counselors to social workers to extracurriculars there, and, and of course, graduation and diploma they're eligible for.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Linowski and Mr. Vilani, I think the only thing I'm going to ask for in the business plan is, what would make Bethel Park different than the students are going to cyber right now? Are we, you know, besides Bethel Park teachers, are we going to have them, is it going to be like our current remote day, four and or five days a week? Those are some of the things, too, I think we need to know so that parents understand when we're saying, we offer this program, we're going above and beyond what a norm, what other cyber schools are doing. I think that's part of the business plan that I would like to see.
Yeah, I think that's part of the secret sauce. I mean, we.
Oh, you didn't say that part of it, that's why I'm asking that question.
We have to understand what the competition and the, the alternative choices are, and we have to establish what our secret sauce is so that people want to come to Bethel Park cyber.
Yeah, that's what I, that's, you forgot the secret sauce. That's what I was getting at. I couldn't figure your verbiage. And then, you know, so what makes us more appealing to a parent or a student? And then the fact that they would also be able to, depending on it, do some co-curricular activities if we can make it. At this point in time, they can only do extracurricular activities if they choose a cyber school. They may be able to choose co-curricular activities moving forward if it is a Bethel Park situation. So there are some distinctions that need to be made at that end, too, I believe, if you guys can enlighten us on that.
We will. Yep.
I have one more.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Just one last, just one last question for, for both of you. Hybrid will not. Um, hybrid will not be part of this, am I correct on that?
Um, in the, obviously, the outlook is not to have a similar platform to where we had this year. Uh, you know, one of the questions Mr. Christensen brought up, um, you know, was the expenditure and how do we format this, format this to work in our current system? So, you know, in the high school more specifically, we do have some singleton classes where, um, financially, we would not be able to extend or offer multiple sections because that would increase the amount of hires substantially. But we do have options within a five or six-period schedule, uh, within preps and different things uh that we would look to evaluate. Uh, we will have to involve the Federation, and we wanna make sure that we have their input, and, um, you know, we do things there. So to say that it's non-existent, um, I, I wouldn't wanna lie or misguide you on that, but at the same time, the focus is to have a separate remote instruction period, K to 12. So, you know, if we have elementary students in first grade that are deciding to take a remote option, uh, that instructor is teaching those students remotely, um, not both at that time. Now, if there's a number or a point where we say, uh, there's things, that's all kind of determination and factors that have to be ironed out, uh, going forward, especially in the specialties or the, uh, uh, classes that we can't offer multiple sections in, uh, in certain grades.
Okay, so after, after you have, after you evaluate, um, I guess, the structure and you look into it a little bit more, we'll, we'll probably have a clearer picture. Uh, I guess, next time we all meet and have this discussion again?
Absolutely, we'll, we'll bring back those things from the business perspective, obviously. You know, looking at the trends and numbers, the expenditures out, uh, as well as, um, you know, the opportunities and expenditures compared to what we're doing now, as well as, you know, Mrs. Turner's question, um, with the model, the plan, the expectation, and just, you know, the way the instruction will be delivered. That'll all be included, uh, when we bring it back to the board, uh, in a month with a full plan.
Thank you.
Mr. Vilani, does that month work with where we are at with high school students choosing schedules?
Yeah.
Are we running up, do we need to, do we need to have a separate meeting for that? I mean, we can discuss that, but are we running up against a, a deadline here?
Um, there, there is a deadline. Um, you, you know, right now, we, I'm gonna be sending some email blasts out to high school students and parents. Uh, we, we did release our course, uh, description guide, uh, last week that was approved, or two weeks ago that was approved. Uh, we do have a, uh, scheduling, right now, recommendations are going on from teachers to high school. Uh, next week, uh, the Home Access Center will open for students to pick classes and then counselor meetings. Um, we're, we're on target right now and, and looking to start developing the master schedule at the high school beginning in May. Uh, it's going to have to be created into the summer. So, uh, to be advantageous and to prepare, once we structure the master schedule and do the mass runs and get students scheduled into their selections, uh, you know, we have to kinda have this established by then, uh, similar to this year where we explored things later on. Once the schedule is locked, it's very hard to move, mass-move students for scheduling purposes. So that's where Mr. Linowski is correct in saying that, you know, if we're gonna strike on this or, or we're going to explore this and then look to create a structure, it, it does have to happen i- in the next two months.
Okay, so we're on schedule if we approve the end of March for all of this to happen in the fall for those parents that are listening.
We, we would be in line to create this if, if done by then, yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion about this item? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Turner.
Thanks, Mrs. Dobis, for pushing this issue, uh, like starting last year.
And, and thank, and thank you guys for, as a board, for, um, thinking outside the box and being willing to, uh, meet the needs of, of all our students. It's not easy to go this route, but it's much easier to, hey, let's just build our school and have everybody show up. But I think you're recognizing that that's not always the case. So, um, it's good that we're, we're giving this opportunity to all the kids to, to be Bethel Park students again in various formats.
Thank you. So, um, under this committee, uh, these not, these items, I think one and two and four can be put on the consent agenda. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. McCoslin, one, two, and four will go on the consent agenda next week?
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. McGregor, I think you could probably, uh, take all the items and we can discuss them. I don't think you need to take them separately.
Okay, we have, uh, eight items under personnel. Approval of EDR responsibilities, uh, program. Two, acceptance of resignations. Three, approval of unpaid leave of absence. Four, approve, approval of leave of absence. Uh, five, approval of COVID-19 compensatory services program staffing. Six, MOU with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. Seven, MOU with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. And eight, information technology job description.
Okay, so, um, are there any questions or comments about any one of these items?
Yes, I would like, uh, a little further explanation of five. The compensatory, uh, compensatory services program staffing.
Why, I think, um, Mrs. Sutton could, uh, better explain that than any of us can.
I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Sarah Shu, who has been heading up that initiative. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Um, this is initiative that was passed along as a requirement by the state that we were granted the monies from the state for this purpose. Um, and it specifically looked at students with IEPs and any impression that they may, that may have resulted as a result of the closures um, that we had back in March until the start of the school year. So our IEP, uh, students were progress monitored, and data was collected to make these determinations for these specific areas. But this was a mandate from the state. Um, so as of this moment, we're within budget and have not gone over, um, what the state has allotted us.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Shu, sorry.
Did she, did I hear you say this was from last March until June? This isn't dealing with the, the tutoring for this, this school year?
The tutoring is a result of any regression that were, that occurred from the closures from March until June. So what the state had asked us to do was look at where the student's progress monitoring was um, when we closed. So it ended up being about the third nine weeks in their data at that time. We compared that to where the student's progress monitoring is at the beginning of this year. We looked to see if the students could recoup those skills up until December. So the students had an opportunity to recoup skills up until, if they had not recouped those skills from where they were in March, they qualified for these services.
Now, Dr. Shu, can you differentiate between ESY and CCS services?
Yes, absolutely, they are, they are two completely separate programs. ESY, we look at data regression, um, for students with IEPs in specific categories. And that data is collected, and in fact, that's actually a really important, um, point to make, thank you, Mr. McGregor, that our data collection for CCS ended at the beginning of December, and that's where our ESY data collection started. ESY data collection looks at the regret may have occurred during our holiday break. So if students regressed over the holiday break, now, that being said, there are other factors taking into qualifications for, for ESY, where CCS, there were no other qualifications taking in, it was very prescriptive. If they did not meet their recruitment area, they qualified for CCS. We look at a lot of different factors when qualifying for ESY.
Thank you very much.
And additionally, ESY, um, which hopefully will be on the next board agenda, the program approval, typically occurs in the month of July, where CCS will start. Um, I'll be notifying teachers if this is approved tonight, tomorrow morning, that they can start contacting parents and scheduling this immediately.
Hey, Dr. Shu, we have, we have both middle schools and the high school on here, but we only have three of the five elementary schools. Can you explain, please?
In those buildings, the students, uh, no student showed regression.
Okay, thank you.
That's in the buildings that were omitted?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Set the buildings up, uh, by qualification. They're, they're broken down by buildings because I recommended having tutoring either before or after school. And so it grouped them specifically by building. In the two buildings that are missing in the elementary, no students qualified within those buildings. Therefore, they-
Okay, thank you, I just, I just wanted clarification. I didn't know if it was because they weren't Title I or, you know, nondescriptive, or if there was, you know, no regression. Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Shu, this is Barry. I had a, just a, you know, not a question of the program, I think the program's good, but when I see all the TBDs in terms of people, how many, how many bodies, how many people does that actually represent? Because it seems like a lot, and I know when we've done tutoring programs in the past, it's taken a while to fill all those different positions. You know, even though we see, uh, however many, you know, like in the, the staff, there's something like, uh, 20, does that really mean we need to find 20 individual people? Or can, you know, one person fill multiple of these slots?
Um, Ms. Laney did, there is one role that, um, well, I should say that there's two positions that teachers are doing double duty. So I'll say, um, for example, Washington, um, it's a, a life skills position, and specifically in one in reading and math, and the same teacher is offered to do both positions. Additionally, um, at Independence Middle School and Bethel Park High School, they share the same speech therapist, and that speech therapist is offered to do both roles.
Okay, so at least you, you have, you see a plan, a, a staffing plan to put people in those positions, existing people. There's, first of all, no net new hires, but also, based on the existing staff, you, you have a plan for existing people to put in those positions?
I have existing, I have a plan for existing positions. Um, I will say I do have a couple openings at both IMS and the high school where I am continually exhausting, um, all my resources to find individuals to fill those positions. I've been working closely, um, with Anthony and Doug to try to come up with, uh, those opening positions. But as of this moment, I have all of, uh, the elementary positions filled as well as Neil.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Shu.
Any other questions about any of these items? Does anyone want to hold any of the items out, or can they all go on the consent agenda? Okay, uh, Mr. McCoslin, all these eight items will go on the consent agenda next week.
Thank you.
Mr. Christensen?
Yeah, let's handle the finance committee in the same way. Let's open it up for, uh, discussion on all of them. Uh, if I can just make a few preliminary comments. First, the salaries and bills, financial report, budgetary transfers, I believe those should for sure go on the, uh, uh, consent agenda. Um, I had a question about, uh, you know, maybe, I don't know who, who is, who had put out all these three AIU, um, line items on here, but maybe it looks like there's some, we're doing some things we've done in previous years, but there's also some things that are new that are happening here also, or at least a, a new contract to, uh, formalize what we've been doing with them. Can you just kinda position those three line items with the AIU?
I can speak to the, um, number five, which is the, this is annual program services budget from the AIU, where Bethel Park, um, your increase in cost over the prior year was $588.56. This is basically their budget, uh, and our obligation to fund that budget for the 2122 school year. Um, number six is just an amendment to the existing pre-K agreement. Uh, we had, we had received some CARES funding, plus we have received, uh, we did an amendment to the, uh, original budget for pre-K, and the pass-through amount had to be increased. This is just an amendment to that agreement to reflect the increase in that pass-through amount. Uh, it was previously approved, but this just changes the dollar amount. Um, the number seven, um, the annual, um, it's a annual continuation agreement for the pre-K, uh, program and the Head Start program for the AIU. I think Mrs. Wells could probably address that better than I, since she, she coordinates that program.
Sure, thanks, Mr. McCoslin. Um, we've been working with the AIU for years. This is an agreement that we will, um, post for kindergarten registration, that we will try to register students early, that we will work together to transition and have activities, um, for the incoming kindergarten students. And so this is an agreement that in the past two years, they have asked the board to approve, where previous to the past two years, they did not.
Beth, could you repeat that, please?
Sure, can you hear me, Dr. D?
Uh, yeah, it, it, I, I was writing a note on something that we just discussed, and I missed your, your comments, so I'd appreciate it.
This is an agreement with the AIU for kindergarten transition. We have had this agreement for years, and for the past two years, they have asked that we formalize the agreement with the board approval. It is about registering students early for kindergarten and, um, having transition activities, and that we report how many students we had register early for kindergarten to the IU. We report how many kids we had at the beginning of the year and how many are in the program, and share data.
Okay, so it's formalizing something we have been doing with the IU?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, Beth.
Okay, yeah, thank you, Beth and Doug, for explaining that, those topics around the AIU. I believe all these items, any other comments on these items, anybody?
My only question is, um, as we work through the technology updates and the technology plan, um, is this, this, this software update, is that, would that be included in that? And there'd be no other costs on top of it?
This, uh, specific software update is the, uh, reporting piece for the Student Information System, which, uh, is currently based on Cogniz version 10, which is a product that, uh, IBM officially ended support on July the 20th. And so, you know, we didn't have any need for, uh, the more up-to-date reporting software package because it was meeting our needs. However, whenever we encounter problems and need support, uh, we are not able to get support through our Student Information System vendor because they're not able to get support through IBM. And so, uh, that necessitated our making this upgrade.
So is version 11 the latest version?
It is, yeah. Well, it's the latest version they support, I don't know if it's the latest version.
Yeah, and that would be part of-
The last version they support or the latest version they support?
It's the latest version that Power School supports for use with eSchool Plus.
Oh.
eSchool View, eSchool Plus, sorry. Looking the website.
It just seems like if version 10's been discontinued by IBM, or it has been discontinued a while ago, that version 11 isn't far behind from being discontinued.
That was why I was asking where it fell in this planning process.
Yes, I I share your concern. Um, we don't have the ability to ask them for later software updates because it's a corporate decision on their end.
Okay, well, where it would come into our technology blueprint is, you know, even for administrative systems, maybe we need to go to some other platform that, you know, isn't, um, developed, yeah, such a, you know.
Narrow, so, yes.
Yeah, I think all those things are good points of discussion for the Technology Committee.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, the recommendation is that all these items, um, be put into the consent agenda. Does anyone have an objection to any one of those items being put in the consent agenda? Okay, Mr. McCoslin, all item, all eight items will go on the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next week, we're going to be, um, taking a look at the revised school opening health and safety plan based on our new opening. Dr. Jan Sani, do you want to, um, give us an update here and talk about this?
Yes, thank you, uh, Mrs. Dobus. Uh, let me start with some good news. Uh, first of all, uh, as you know, we are currently in, um, in the substantial range, which means that, uh, more than 10% of, uh, folks being tested are in the positivity range. However, that number's significantly, uh, going down, and we hope soon that we'll actually be back in the, uh, moderate range. Uh, Bethel Park is a a little bit higher, but once again, I suspect that folks that aren't feeling well are going to get tested, they're not, um, getting random tests as much as that would happen across the county. A couple of things that are going to be, uh, different with our, um, health and safety plan would be our phase in that we've, uh, talked about in the past. And as you know, uh, first, second, and kindergarten's, uh, students are back four days a week. This Thursday, uh, the third and fourth grade students will be returning four days a week. On Monday, February 22nd, five through eight, and then on March 8th, the high school, nine through 12, will be returning four days a week. Another significant piece, uh, with the plan is is the, um, wearing of the masks. Uh, the, uh, CDC and PDE has, uh, given the districts a little more flexibility with, uh, the ability to be actually a little closer than six feet when the mask is on. There are two, uh, times that we, uh, anticipate that students would have their mask off. One, obviously, being, uh, lunchtime eating, and the other is, um, a possible, uh, break during class time, a mask break. Uh, with the mask break, um, we would ask that, uh, the, uh, teachers stagger students so that they are six foot or further apart when taking their mask off for a short break. And then with the cafeteria, we've put in some mitigation pieces, uh, in many of the cafeterias, most of them, uh, that have a dedicated cafeteria with either a social distance piece of six feet with individual desk or, um, plexiglass partitions. So we're putting those things in place. That's basically, in a nutshell, the changes that will occur, um, with the, uh, update of the health and safety plan. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Jan Sani. Dr. Jan Sani?
Yes, Officer.
We received a couple, thank you, uh, received some requests from parents in regards to the possibility of the district in cooperation with the municipality about opening up some of our facilities for our Bethel Park recreation programs. Um, with that request, you know, they've been going on, and since you said the numbers are coming down, um, and I know you've been conversations, multiple conversations with, um, Mr. Stover from the municipality, is there any timeframe we could be looking at so we can get some information? I'm not asking for a specific date now, but just, um, any thoughts on what you see is a good possibility of trying to meet some of these needs from other parts of our, uh, school community?
Uh, yes, thank you, Officer, uh, excuse me, Mr. Modrak. Um, we, right now, we have our swim programs that have been, um, at the high school, so we've been transitioning back. We anticipate before the end of this month, quite possibly, uh, the use of, uh, Neil Armstrong's gymnasium for some adult programs as well as youth programs. So we are taking steps, and once again, as as we get kids back full to school four days a week, I would anticipate that we will increase, uh, the outside use with the, uh, recreation program as well.
And and one quick question, too. In all our winter athletic programs, um, any, and I think it's for Whipple Live, but I believe, um, we've been okay, there's been no issues with athletes at this point in time, uh, spreading the virus from one, one person to another.
Well, thank you.
Is that accurate, is that correct?
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Modrak. You brought up a great point. I neglected to say that right now, we only have one active case in the entire school district, all eight buildings, one active case. We've had zero cases of transmission, other than, uh, maybe perhaps within a household. We've had no transfer, uh, trans, um, there's been no transmittal of the virus, uh, from athlete to athlete and student to student, really. So, um, no, we've been, uh, real strict at when to wear the mask. We've, uh, the coaches have done a wonderful job of, um, making sure that they break up their practices in 10-minute intervals so that, uh, players are not around each other for more than 10 minutes. Uh, all that's been very helpful, so we've not had any cases. We've had some really, uh, great success to report. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sloan, for putting those, uh, policies and procedures in place, uh, to assist our kids to get back, and hopefully we can meet other needs within the community in a short period of time.
And and I'd like to, I'd like to recommend that with our guidelines that we are using for athletics, that if a recreation program comes into our buildings, that we, uh, require that they also use those same kind of requirements in their practices so that, uh, we avoid all kind of problems. So that was my, that's just my recommendation.
Well, that's a great point, Mrs. Dobus. In fact, we've shared those plans, uh, with the recreation. They are very supportive of of following our plans as well, so thank you for that point.
Okay, so, um, you will be able, you will upload that to, um, Board Docs for next week soon, right?
Yes, we're we're going to, uh, work on it, uh, this week, and it'll be up, uh, hopefully before the weekend.
Okay, that would be great, so we can take a look at it and have time to look at Any other questions about the phase reopening plan?
We're not moving that to consent agenda, correct?
What?
We're not moving that.
No.
No, that's not, no, that, that, Dr., Mr. McCoslin, that will not be on the consent agenda.
Got it.
Okay. Um, any phone calls?
I don't have anything in public comment.
I don't have anything in public comment either. Like to, uh, any board comments at this time?
I have not.
I'd like to have a, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Christensen and seconded by Mr. Spacuzza.
I thought you were in win.
Mr. McCoslin, can you put up the, uh, voting for the adjournment?
Voting is open.
No surprise.
Okay, thank you.